Councilmember Price?
Mr. President, I need to recuse myself from items 11 and 14 because my wife's employer has worked with applicants on these items. Additionally, out of an abundance of caution, I'm accusing myself from item 12 because it's an item as written. It's unclear what organizations are working on each project.
Very good. Thank you.
El Pueblo is more than just a tourist destination. It is the beating heart of our city's history and culture, the birthplace of the great city of Los Angeles. The merchants and families who have dedicated their lives to preserving and sharing this heritage deserve our full support and consideration. Let us ensure, finally, Mr. President, as well as colleagues, that we handle this case with the care and attention that it deserves, reaffirming our dedication to fairness, to due process, and the preservation of our cultural heritage. Thank you very much, Mr. President. With that, colleagues, I respectfully ask for an eye vote.
Thank you very much. So, members' item, I see no other members wishing to be heard. Item 17 is now before us. On that item, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabloid the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
All right. With that, we're ready to begin the public comment section of our meeting.
Hello, my name is Paula Macorona, and I've been a family childcare provider in the area of LA for about sixteen years. I mean, sixteen years, I'm sorry. As a family childcare provider, you do it all to prepare for the day. I get up sometimes at four in the morning. I cook their meals and snacks, clean the classroom area, sanitize the equipment, and prepare the daily activities. I am a provider because I choose it and because I have the passion to educate and care for children. And I also, I have in my heart to help all of the families, working families. I have helped so many families over the years, allowing working parents to do their jobs, knowing their children are in a safe and caring environment. I have helped so many families over the years, I'm sorry, and every child is still in my heart. When parents can work without worrying about childcare, overall productivity increases benefit both families and the economy. The cost of food, cleaning, gas, materials, everything has gone up, yet our high-quality care remains the same. In supporting to the state's transition to an alternate methodology model, we show our communities our commitment to a more inclusive and flexible approach to parents' care needs. This change will have a significant impact in our city and state because it will provide additional childcare options for working families so that all the children will have access to quality early care and education. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Great. My name is Tony Huang. I have the pleasure of being the executive director for Equality California, the nation's largest statewide LGBTQ civil rights organization. In 2008, Proposition 8 narrowly passed, a provision in the California Constitution which banned same-sex marriage and defined marriage only between a man and a woman. Since that time in 2008, activists up and down the state shifted public opinion and also moved a case before the Supreme Court allowing same-sex marriages to come back to California in 2013 with the Perry decision. After that, in a subsequent decision before the Supreme Court with Obergefell, same-sex marriages were legalized nationwide. Unfortunately, since then, particularly with the current composition of an extremist Supreme Court, there have been specific justices, folks like Clarence Thomas and Samuel Alito, that have said those decisions were wrongly decided. Given the precedents with 2022 and the evisceration of Roe versus Wade, we know that our communities is under attack. And so, we're asking that the city stand affirmatively to enshrine both same-sex and interracial marriages in the California Constitution in November 2024. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Greetings, councilmembers. My name is Vambi Salcedo, and I do have the privilege to be the president and the CEO of the Trans-Latinial Coalition, which is the biggest translator organization in the United States. As we know, there are bigoted politicians who continue to take away the rights of LGBTQ people here and across the United States, particularly targeting trans people. And we need to have protections that will ensure our rights are protected. That is why the Trans-Latinial Coalition, in collaboration with six other organizations, are leading the way to include a ballot measure in November to ensure that we all have the freedom to marry. Obviously, it's important that the city and the state that stands with the values of our communities do everything, everything that we need to do in order to protect our communities. And so, I ask for your endorsement.
General public comment?
I ask for your endorsement to make sure that we have the protections that we need and that you endorse the freedom to marry for all peoples. I also want to say that it's important that we also continue to protect the lives of transgender and nonconforming and cissex people, and I want to ask you to do everything and anything that you can to support one of the most marginalized populations and one of the populations that has been forgotten for many years. And so, I ask you to invest in the livelihood of transgender and nonconforming and cissex people in this budget cycle and all the budget cycles to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. My name is Elizabeth Lizaraga. I'm a second-generation family childcare provider located in Long Beach. I have been providing care about six years now, and I'm so proud to be part of our union, CCPU Local 99, that has long been fighting to make things better for me, for my childcare workers like me, and for all families who rely on childcare providing days and days out. Working parents juggle a multiple of demands: managing work deadlines, household responsibilities, and the contact pressure to balance their career with calorie time for their children's. Time contrast and stress are companion, but childcare providers appreciate these reliably and are better positioned to support them. Imagine the peace of mind a parent experiences knowing their children are in a safe and stimulating environment regardless of their unpredictable work hours, regardless of where they live. I have nature, feed, educate, and gone above and beyond for childrens and families I serve in my community. Childers are ready for school when they enter childcare programs. Parents are ready to support their children's learning, and schools are ready to welcome them into their classrooms. Why calorie costs includes ingredients for fresh and healthy meals, educational materials such as books and toys, and transportation costs for school drop-off and pickup? We must take action to reform and current childcare payment system, paying providers fair pay for quality childcare, meaning compensating them for all the work time and costs necessary to provide care for all our future generation childrens. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
I would like to speak on item 11, 12, and 13.
What name did you sign up under?
Those items are not open to public comment, so the only items are open to public comment is 38 to 50.
What name did you sign up under?
Speak on items 41.
Speaker, which name did you sign up under?
And 47, all items and the general public comment.
Okay. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
One minute for the general public comment. Please begin with your item, please. I will begin on number 41, the Freedom to Marry Ballot Initiative. This Freedom to Marry reminds me one of the councilmember, which is the councilmember I love the most, which is Councilmember Karen Price. So, if he has the freedom to marry two persons at the same time, and I believe I want to wish to expand this freedom to marry to every single Angelino inside of the city of Los Angeles. I want to know why our councilmember, Karen Price, has the freedom to marry two persons at the same time while every single other Angelino only have the freedom to marry one person at one time? So, I see that is a huge inequality on all Angelinos, and I see that a huge equity issue, justice issue, civil rights issue for every single Los Angelinos. Now, let's move on to item number 42, Harry Stausen. He's talking about Martin Luther King Community Hospital, and I kind of support this, I kind of support him, like I always do, because Martin Luther King Hospital is a very essential hospital, especially in that area of the neighborhood. When we already have a hospital shortage, nursing shortage, doctor shortage, ICU room shortage, hospital bed shortage, we cannot afford to eliminate any hospital. We cannot afford to eliminate any nurse, any doctor, any hospital bed. So, we really hope Harry Stausen can try every single effort possible to save all the employee, all the patients, and the historic hospital in this building, even though Harry Stausen continued to told me I'm a racist. Another one, let's continue on item number 47, I believe. Is that number 47? Which is talking about the illegal dumping and illegal trash. This item is nothing new. The only thing is, I'm concerned is, it only talking about Watts community, but the issue about this agenda occurs all over Los Angeles, not just Watts community. I am very concerned of my council, Council District Number One, which is when I call to my councilmember about illegal dumping, our councilmember does not give a response. I'm concerned about Kevin DeLeón's office, because if there's any office needs the most assistance, that's the ski slope Kevin DeLeón office. I really wish Kevin DeLeón have enough resources to address the illegal dumping in the ski slope, and I have, Kevin DeLeón has my full support.
General public comment?
For my general public comment, I want to offer my condolences to Officer Iloriaga, because I recently know that he currently lost a valued family member, which is his mother. And I see many times Kevin DeLeón or any councilmember are doing those adjournment to recognize a community member in the adjournment of the meeting, and I recommend that if we can add one more person, the mother of Officer Iloriaga, to our adjournment of the meeting of today. Not only she is a valued community member, and at the same time, she support LAPD, she raised the LAPD officer, she raised the General Services Police Officer, she raised her son for public service, she raised her son for public safety, and I believe for a great mother like Officer Iloriaga's mother, she deserved an adjournment motion for today's meeting. Thank you very much, Officer Iloriaga. I offer you my full condolences.
Speaker, your time is expired. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is William, and I'm a vendor on District One.
My experience with the agents of the BSS show up. They take photos and they take videos, but they don't take time to explain how can we avoid getting tickets. Also, as a community of vendors, we would like to have educational workshops. We are not, we don't represent any kind of threat. So, I think it is unfair the use of weapons or pepper gas from the officials, the officers. So, we are asking you for your support. So, they can change these types of practices. Thank you very much.
My name is Fernando Quesada. I want to talk and comment about number 46. Regarding the vendors, the street vendors. I've been selling for more than twenty years. So, I want to talk about these practices of the BSS. They don't even get off the cars. They just drive by with a camera. And then, you get a citation on the mail. Or a ticket. So, we do not want these kind of practices anymore. Even the ones that issue tickets are using this kind of cars nowadays. They don't even get off the patrol. They just take a photo, and then you get a ticket. So, members of the council, I want to request. So, please pass this law so we can prevent the harassment. Take your time. They should take their time and get off the car. And they should at least give the person the ticket in their hands. We want workshops. We are not dangerous people. We are people that are struggling. We also want. To implement the law that was approved of 27.51. Regarding the permits on the streets. So, please, I request this from you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, on the number 46, as vendors, we want more education. So, as business, we don't want any more enforcement. We would like not more weapons or pepper gas. We are not criminals. We are well-organized vendors. We are not a danger for the country. We just want our families to be good. So, they can contribute to this country with improvements. We are hard-working people. With the willingness of thriving. That's why we need your support so we can move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. My name is Anna Cruz. I was a street vendor, and now I am an organizer with Community Power Collective. The street vending program is unbalanced, a program that focuses on enforcement and not on educating will fail. The motion mentions that the BSS has to educate, but education is not just handing out flyers or writing fines. Agents have to be educated to also have conversations with vendors so that they understand vendors' culture. In my experience as a vendor in Hollywood, the BSS only sends us fines by mail, and these practices limits the possibility of understanding and correcting the alleged violation. Additionally, on many occasions, we receive fines by mail indicating dates where we were not selling, in which we were at school events with our childrens. The use of weapon or a weapon that looks like a gun causes intimidation, particularly when officers are uniformed very similar to agencies such as police.
General public comment?
And the sheriffs. Enforcing administrative violation, which is what SB 946 says, makes no sense. Why do we have to be enforced by an agency that uses weapons? The role of the BSS has to be similar to the officers who administer parking tickets since they don't carry weapons. Also, please consider scheduling the cost of the seller's permit because now we are in a limbo. Vendors can afford to renew the permit for $291 and let them in a very vulnerable or receiving situations. Councilmembers, I ask for your leadership to make the necessary changes to the BSS practices and support the sidewalk vending program in Los Angeles. Thank you.
I'm here today to talk on behalf of all the street vendors. And I'm also one of the leaders at 46 Main, and I organize the vendors. We want to make sure that the law SB 46 is respected. There is no reason why officials should be carrying weapons. BSS needs to provide more education. We do not want any more violations, and we don't want any of the tickets to be sent by mail. The agents or officials also need to be trained so they can have conversations with us. And we also want them to respect the organized areas. And we also want to make sure that it's on the calendar the costs for the permits. Because at this moment, we find ourselves vulnerable, and we are not able to pay the $291 for the penalty. I trust your leadership, and I really hope that our public comment will be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I also would like to talk to you about the cost of the permits. The motion regarding the $27 is on the desk. It has been approved and is not being effective yet. I want to ask the councilmembers to take this into consideration and to make sure that this is going to go in effect before you guys go on vacation. Because you guys are going on vacation, happy, and with a lot of peace, to relax with your family, here we're going to be the vendors, and we're going to be vulnerable and with the possibility of getting a ticket because we have not paid for our permits. I also would like to talk about the Watamalan Corredor with member council Unises. I would like for you to stop that motion, to stop working with new groups. They are not representing the Watamalan community. We would like for you to do is to go back to the Watamalan Corredor and so we can continue with our conversations. Thank you very much.
Good morning. Which items? General public comment? Okay. So, you have one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
I wish to thank you to McCoster's office, Padilla's office, and also DeLeón's office. Why am I thanking them? Not even their district or anything, but they went out of their way to make sure I got my braille that I'm entitled to. Kocorian, you're such a piece of trash, what you did to the city clerk's office. I'm entitled to braille. They saw my credentials and everything, and what you did was trying to ruin me, trying to say I'm not entitled to it. I need to show medical, I need to do this. I showed everything that was required, and what you did was nothing. Your staff made sure to go out of their way to do nothing. You're a piece of fucking trash. Do you understand that, Kocorian? I'm entitled to braille, and you did whatever you, I don't know why, if you hate me, fine, take it out on me, but don't take it out on the city clerk's office, cocksucker, motherfucker.
Next speaker? Next, Spindler, I didn't call you yet. I didn't call you yet. We're taking the names that I called. I didn't call you yet. Step aside, please, for the next speaker. Step aside, please, for the next speaker.
Thank you. So, under item 46, I commend the councilmembers, especially Councilmember Price, who I know has been working on this issue for quite a long time, and I really commend the street vendors that have lined in front of his council district in an orderly fashion. That's something that we've tried to replicate on the El Salvador corridor but have been unsuccessful because of the lack of support or program from our council office. And so, we're asking for a citywide initiative to be adopted, but not one that is piecemealed. We really want you to take into consideration the brick and mortar, the local law enforcement, the Department of Street Services, to come and build this program together. I think it's very important to get all these different perspectives so that we can pilot some of these programs. We've been pushing for over twenty months for a street vending district with 126 street vendors on a two-block radius.
General public comment?
The reason that I originally came down here for was for item number five that got pulled for some reason after it was rushed from committee two weeks ago. Two weeks ago, I stood at this very podium and got the finger from Councilmember Padilla, as did the Central American community and my eight-year-old daughter. And I still have not received an apology, neither has our community nor my daughter, and it was because we were here to do exactly what I'm doing today, asking you councilmembers to look at item number five, do your own homework, ask, talk to the two groups that are now divided, unfortunately, in CD One, after there was already a twenty-month application for the Watamalan Square, which was part of the original concept of 2014, the LA Times dubbed Little Latin America, which has now given birth to the El Salvador corridor, the Mayan corridor, the Oaxacan corridor, and hopefully soon, the Watamalan Square. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker? Next speaker, please. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you'd like to speak to?
Yes, my name is Alex Alvarado. I'm originally here for item five, which is the Watamalan Square, but it got moved, but I'm here for general public.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment.
Good morning, councilpeople. I'm gonna speak a little louder because we have an interruption on the left side. I asked that.
Hold this time. In fact, start this time over. Mr. Spindler, the member of the public who is now entitled to speak is being distracted by your conduct. Please get out of that seat, get out of that seat, as the officers have just instructed you, and I'm ordering you two now, move from that seat, move from that seat, go sit someplace You're actively disrupting the meeting. I'm not going to warn you again. Sir, your time will start over again. Sorry about that. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, all councilmembers. You have probably seen me here, like Raoul Claro said. I've been pleading with all city councilmembers to really look at this file, which is Council File 2210949, which was a project that was sabotaged by Unises Hernandez. How dare you, Unises Hernandez! You instructed Alexander Robinsons from the Neighborhood Council West not to submit that community impact report, and you sabotaged and you stole our project, and now you're rushing this new file, rushing this new project with people that are not even in the community. Four people sat here. We were here last week with about thirteen people. You should be ashamed of yourself because you have violated the trust of the. You should be ashamed of yourself because you have violated the trust of the Guatemalan and the Central American community, and this is not over. We told you we're not gonna stand down. I ask all city members to pretty... Please look at this file. Look and investigate. You can contact me at The Scholars Factor. It's a nonprofit organization. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Harriet Elliott, District 10. General public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm just gonna add what I said last time about John Henry Watson was a PE teacher for my son in '92, and he remembers him, and he said he was a good kid, okay? I am not allowed to get LA High School transcripts. I know my son's grades came up, but they don't want me to see his homeroom teacher. His homeroom teacher says I have not one complaint about your son. Okay, they wanna write the narrative, and what I'm doing right now is I am a witness to 20 deaths, and it says 20 people killed. This is jury tampering. 20 people have been killed around me, all my friends, all my school friends, and my friends recently. I'm serious. 20 people killed around me. It's mostly cancer DEWs from directed energy. Yeah. I hope you guys read "directed energy." Does this. DEW. Thank you.
So, the Bureau of Street Services is unjustly treating immigrant street vendors, as you can tell by the people who are listening, because I see a lot of you don't give a shit clearly about what everyone is saying, especially because it's in Spanish. So, I'm here to say it in English. But these officers are coming in... They're being aggressive to our street vendors. They're siding them without even approaching them. They're taking pictures of street vendors and mailing them their tickets. Is that okay with you all, the way that these officers are conducting themselves with our street vendors? These are innocent people, innocent, hard-working vendors who are out on the streets every single day, and for you all to sit here and not pay attention because it's in a different language is honestly disrespectful. And you all really need to check the Bureau of Street Services, the BSS for sure, and make sure that these officers are conducting themselves with civility, that they're educating street vendors, that they're making an effort to help them? Okay, does that ringing a bell for everybody? Great, thank you. Okay, so now for general public comment. I want to thank you all for supporting item number 17, the preservation of the burro in Placito Alvera is very important. It's a tradition that's been here for over 60 years, and so thank you for supporting that motion to continue that service. The family, I'm here with the family as well. And lastly, I wanna... Of course, yes. And last, I want to call on all members of the council to sign on to a ceasefire resolution. A ceasefire resolution, what is it calling for? It's calling for peace. It's calling for the end of the ethnic cleansing of Palestinians, and your silence is complicit. And I really don't understand the fear of being called anti-Semitic and why some of you shy away from taking action and speaking against genocide just because you're gonna be called some name that doesn't even apply. Asking for peace and asking for the end to the slaughter of civilians is something everybody in this council should be supporting. I know some of you don't wanna look at me, but I'm talking to you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Pastor Q. I pastor the Church Without Walls in Skid Row, and I would like to speak to item 14, 46, and general public comments, please.
Okay, so item 14 is not open for public comment, but you can speak to it during general. But you have one minute for item 46 and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the item.
Again, my name is Pastor Q from the Church Without Walls, Skid Row, also with Clergy and Lady United for Economic Justice, with Clergy for Black Lives, and the Creating Justice, Peace, and Healing Center in Skid Row. Firstly, I support these street vendors. Folks who are trying to make an honest living should be supported in every way possible. They should be humanized and not be criminalized. Secondly, on the week in which we're commemorating Juneteenth, I would like to be clear that Mama Biddy Mason is one of our revered ancestors, a freedom fighter, a midwife, a healer, an entrepreneur, a church planter, and much more. Though we support renaming Persian Square in her honor, we wanna be clear that naming public streets and places after our ancestors while upholding oppression of black folks will not stand. Remember, Kevin De León was conspiring with other leaders to gerrymander and remove power from black and indigenous communities.
General public.
How can you be the oppressor and the healer at the same time? Both a surgeon and a mugger will cut you. One will cut you to heal you, the other one will cut you to kill you. You can't cover... You can't cover political trauma by simply renaming something after our ancestors. You must pass policies that heal, not politics that kill. We wanna be clear. We support the motion to rename Persian Square, but we don't want KDL associated with Mama Biddy Mason in any way possible. Ceasefire now.
46, sir, and public comment, sir.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Thank you, sir. You are looking at a vendor. 1972, I come here, $50 in my pocket, I'm poor on the streets, I'm a vendor. Somebody gives me a job selling oranges. So, I know your struggle. I know what you... But you need to give back to this city what it can give you. This city can give you the American dream. It can give you anything you want because you guys are hard workers, but you owe this city something too. You need to educate yourself. You gotta... You need to take care of those communities where you work. Those are your communities, but take care of those communities. Make sure that your children don't have to come here and beg this council for help because you're strong enough, you're powerful enough, to help yourselves, to make something of yourselves and for your children. So, again, you know, Mr. President, I've been on this side, I've been on that side, but today, as someone who had the dream come true, who God blessed and gave me a wonderful life here, I wanna thank... I wanna thank this city for what it's done. Public comment. You know, I've had problems with the sixth district, and Ms. Padilla, you know what? I'm gonna stand with you. You know, you and I do not get along, but I know you're a lady and that your mother raised you right, and I'm sorry that this individual felt that he was slighted, and I'm sorry that his daughter may or might have seen things. I'm not gonna question that, but I know who you are. I believe I know who you are, and even though you and I will fight, we gotta fight for the right reasons, to make sure that anybody and everybody in this city has a part in the future of the city. So, I stand with you, and I hope that we can work forward to do the right thing for this city. Thank you.
I didn't put my nigger name.
Good morning. So, you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Okay. I wanna joint for the economic fuck workforce development because the Department Workforce discriminates against a white nigger too like me to legislate the analyst's plan for the 2024-25 matters. Not that it really matters, but it could matter. And look at here on Caffey Fergie. I think there's a mistake on this Kevin De León. It should be spelled Hollywood Walk of Fame for Kevin De León, but somebody put Kevin Fiji or Fucci at 6840 Hollywood Boulevard. Mr. Attorney, can you cure and correct that for Mr. Kevin De León? Look at number 39. The Chief Soto and Rodriguez, mommy mu mu. Mu mu mommy mu mu. 24-state program sponsorship for shit action, shit insurance, shit development, shit funding, and fucking implement shit alternative mythologies for fucking update childcare. Take care of your own goddamn fucking kids. Goddamn, what do you fucking think? California's free? Fucking fix your problems. Stop having babies, Kocorian. Subsidize reimbursement rates in California. Yeah, give all the Angelenos what they need. Free money. And then look at number 40, Mr. Attorney. Am I on topic? Bill SB, son of a bitch, 1103. Small business, nonprofit, common fucking sense, commercial tenant protections. Well, you know there's no protections. Otherwise, if there was protection, I could be selling my dope cookies on the sidewalk and smoking a blunt with my friends, running a corporate business like Donald Trump. But no, you don't want me to smoke my shit on the sidewalks anymore or do my illegal business. That's legal. That's legal. Let's get it right. I'm with the program. Measure 64. I wanna sell my shit on the streets, Mr. Go. And then, with all these items, I'm so fucking confused. Mr. Buckethead and Harley Davidson, Dawson, where the fuck are you guys gonna do with this sponsorship for administrative action? For JR Community Hospital. Now into my non-public comment.
General public comment.
All I wanna do is pray for Los Angeles. I reach out to smoke and scan, pick up a cigarette or a joint and salute me 'cause I'm not the dickhead police trying to kick me off of the sea. I wanna reach out to you 'cause I'm not a fool. I'll be missing you, you foolish criminals, and I can see that you're hungry, Kocorian, to tell me something, but the truth is, your sad-ass, red-faced, pink dictator is mad at me 'cause you miss me, baby, and all I wanna do is say politely, "Fuck you."
Next speaker.
Next speaker. Please don't humor him. Next speaker, please. Please put down the flag. That's a violation of our rules. All right, next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Monique Cooper. I'm in Council District 8. I'm here because I was actually physically put out of my house by a man named Leonard F. Del Pitt, who worked with or was with the neighborhood council. The reason why I'm here is because Leonard Del Pitt was allowed to, with LAPD and LA County Sheriff's, destroy my mother's cremated ashes. I was not given anything. A man named Reggie Johnson died over there. He doesn't own the house that's at 5416 Third Avenue. They have people over there right now working on the house, trying to change everything around, and I'm here to get the help that I need because the LA Housing Department doesn't help. I've been through everybody, OIG, LA HD, Section 8, and everybody, and nobody's helping. He's good friends with a lot of people here, Marquis Harris Dawson, Karen Price. He has all these pictures with everybody, Holly Mitchell, but yet I'm still doing what I have to do. This item is in court right now, and I'm asking for help to apprehend Leonard F. Del Pitt. Thank you.
Okay, and can I ask which council district you live in?
I live in Council District 8, under Marquis Harris Dawson, and I've been to their office several times.
Okay, so maybe somebody from Mr. Harris Dawson's office can meet you to discuss the matter.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Is Mr. De León still available? I wanted to publicly thank him. My name is Francisco Hernandez, from Overe Street, the birthplace of Los Angeles, and I just wanted to say thank you for listening to the plight that my family's going through right now with the commission on Overe Street and shed a little light on what's happening at Overe Street, you know, the birthplace of Los Angeles, where it all began, where the settlers came and, you know, planted their trees for everybody to enjoy here and grow with the city, and it's just being neglected. It's being... No one cares about what's going on at Overe Street, you know? Anaheim has Mickey Mouse. Overe Street, the city of Los Angeles, has El Burro, and I would like everybody to think about that, you know? It's the birthplace of Los Angeles. It should be tended to. Anyways...
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker, please. Next speaker. Now. Now. Or I'm gonna close comment right now. Stop shouting out. You're disrupting the meeting.
Yeah, sir, you should listen to Mr. Kocorian's instructions.
You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Very sorry about that outburst, Your Honor. So, now, let's get to my street vendors, and you know, I have a very good crack business going on right now in CD6, and I'd like to thank Amelda Chinchilla. Let's give her a hand. Oh, yeah. Yes. So, over in Van Nuys, between... On Woodley Boulevard, between Burbank and Victory, you two can sell anything you want. There's no streetlights, and there's no police officers. It's called the Amelda Project. She just doesn't give a fuck about everything, so she's trying an experiment, and we'll see how it works. But Mr. Buckethead there, McCosker, has other plans. He's trying to clean everything up. You know why? Because he's white. Yes, that's right. There's nothing wrong with being white. I didn't say that. You did. So, now, let's get to the Hollywood Walk of Fame, finally. Kevin De León getting a star in the Hollywood Walk of Fame. All right. And he surely deserves it. Yes, those comments about monkeys will live in history. An Academy Award nominee.
Excuse me. I think it's Kevin Feige.
Oh, no. Well, I move to amend it to Kevin De León. Now, we get to item number Freedom to Marry, 41. Yes, I thoroughly agree. If you wanna marry a goat, go right ahead and do so. If you wanna marry anybody, go ahead and do so. But what about the freedom to divorce? Once you're tired and wanna get divorced, it takes too long. Just ask the council president how long it took him to get his proper divorce. Yes, that's right. Yes, and then, of course, he does what everybody does, everybody. Impregnates a woman half his age and has to marry her while she's 400 pounds fat. So, the freedom to divorce and the freedom to marry should be the same. You should go to, like Mexico City. You could just sign a paper, bienes raíces, or bienes separados, and then when you're done, you just sign a piece of paper, and you tell the chica, "Buenas tardes, chica. I'm good to get a younger one." Yes, they make it too hard here. Now, we get to the regional planning on aging. Look at this goddamn load of criminals here on this council. They ain't getting any younger, folks. Yes, what do old people do? They go to the library, they chase squirrels in the park and talk to them and give them names, and they go to petting zoos, and they talk to animals like me, and then I talk back to them, and then they wind up in a mental institution. So, that's why we will do what we do. And now for the general comment. Will Amelda Chinchilla please apologize for that middle finger incident? The poor guy was up here today. All she had to do was say, "I'm sorry for giving you a middle finger. I'm sorry for buying my council office. I'm sorry for not giving my citizens any streetlights. I'm sorry for turning Van Nuys into a drug den. I'm sorry for being 40 pounds overweight. I'm sorry for being on a fucked-up council full of criminals and indicted council members and ethics violators. I'm sorry for a council president that can't even pay his bar dues and renew his law license. I'm so sorry about it. Can't you apologize?" I'll wait two seconds here. No apologies? How about Kevin? Kevin needs to apologize for being born in the first place.
All right, we'll go next to callers on the phone. We'll take 10 minutes of public comment on the phone. I'm sorry, we're done. We're going next to the callers on the phone. You're not entitled to speak just because you sign up. We've taken more than an hour of public comment. Sit down, please. We're going next to the phone.
What's up, nerds and virgins? Brock Landers, Los Angeles Pride Investigator. All open items and general public comment.
So, you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
All right, 40. For the nonprofits, how many nonprofits are hiding behind that name? Bleeding this city... Excuse me, bleeding this city dry when it comes to homelessness. We need to set limits on the salaries for the CEOs of these nonprofits that are receiving any city resources. 41, Freedom to Marry. Interesting that Joe and Barack didn't support same-sex marriage when they were first elected. Donald Trump was the first president to do that. It didn't change until Barack and Joe needed the voting block, and I don't remember anybody at this council speaking out against Joe or Barack at the time. 42. Forty-two. How do you not know that there's issues at the MLK Hospital? Why do you guys keep trying to govern by emergency instead of doing this when you did your budget three weeks ago? Forty-three, digital discrimination. For the past six months, my digital phone calls have been digitally discriminated against multiple times, so I wasn't able to wish Angela a happy birthday. One of the first girls to break my heart was named Angela. If you're down for a little role-playing, you can save that birthday wish, I'll bring over a nineties mixtape, you can do me, it will feel good, and you'll be left understruck. Forty-seven, illegal dumping. Maybe you could reach out to a constituent of mine, Jay Santos, he's not a private investigator, he's a member of the Citizens Auxiliary Police. Jay Santos, he's another law enforcement type guy that could help monitor the illegal dumping and probably give you some good ideas on the best way to do that. Forty-eight, street furniture. I hope some of that street furniture is going to Figaroa, those ladies deserve a place to sit down and rest. Forty-six, sidewalk vending. Why didn't we hear from experts on sidewalk vending like Jason, a smoke and scan viewer? With Karen Price connected to this, I have my doubts. The way that him and Deborah acted at the Biden fraud raiser this weekend while addressing critics of them, it's ironic that Padilla is doing the same thing to people criticizing her. General public comment. For all the affiliation of skaters today, why is skateboarding prohibited on so many city properties if you guys are also down with the down-ass kids and the skaters? KDL, it looks like you got a rug on with a bad dye job up there, you got a rug down there? And then all this talk about from the hood to Berkeley, growing up the daughter of a corrupt politician and you acting like you don't have corruption privilege, it's, you know, it's no wonder you can't find your way back to the hood unless you're following a news crew. It's a good thing that you had housekeepers that could teach you how to fake that accent that comes and goes. And, you know, I think you guys need to hold the sound guy accountable for what he did a couple weeks ago, come out and just admit that he sucks and violated our rights. And besides your bank accounts, what have you done to improve LA since you've been in council? And how dare you question me that I'm not doing anything for the, you know, for the council? And you guys have a good weekend. Shout out smoke and scan.
Next caller, please.
All right, thank you there. I wanna say what's up to all the street vendors in here today, you know, voicing their opinion and stuff, and I think maybe, I wanna, you know, say maybe, I wondered, maybe y'all can maybe sell like some aquarium test kits? Because the other day I was down on Figaroa with this little thing there, and, you know, we were in there kinda doing our thing, and I was trying to reciprocate the action, you know, she took care of me and I, you know, went down and took care of her, and I don't know, ever since then, everything's been tasting like, you know, Alfredo fettuccine with shrimp and salad, that week-old stuff, you get mom red lobster. So I think if I had maybe some aquarium strips, I could, you know, bam bam right quick and test it out.
So you're not speaking to the topic. You're not speaking to the topic. Speak to the topic or we'll move to general public comment.
Well, I was talking about the street vendors down on Figaroa there, brother. That possible, can I do that? Anyway, I was gonna say, just tell me our street vendors can get us some aquarium, you know, test kits in there, so we can make sure these, you know, the pH levels right in that thing before we do, you know, waste five dollars, because, you know, I run about five dollars, you know.
Speaker, you've exhausted your time on item forty-six, please move on to another item.
Another item. Ah, cool, I wanna pick up where Brock left off, you know, he was speaking of good things there, I wanted to ask Brock there, hey, I ordered my gag ball, and I was wondering if.
Yeah, no, okay, so, well, let's, just after several warnings, he's still not speaking to anything on the agenda. Go to general public comment. You have one minute.
Thank you there, you know, dictator. Cool, thank you there. Anyway, anyway, Brock, I was saying, I ordered my gag ball, and I was wondering, does it come automatically installed with, you know, the fifty percent, you know, English speaking, you know, where you roll your R's? Does that come automatically installed, or do you have to turn on and off there? Because I wanted to come down there to the council and get her to sign it and everything, and then I was gonna use it when I go to Home Depot, or, you know, maybe when I'm going to the DMV or to get things done, because if it automatically rolls the R's, you know, half of the time, that'd be good there. And I think, you know, I already put pre-order in there, and I wanna say what's up to the smoke fans community as usual, we're gonna have a good weekend, you know, we're gonna be out at the elbow ballroom tonight, or tomorrow night and doing our thing there, and hopefully have a few good faces there, and I guess y'all have a good in there.
Yeah, hi, DanielGust@Substack.com, calling to speak on item forty-eight and general public comment.
Good afternoon, you have one minute for item forty-eight and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the item.
Great. Item forty-eight, folks, what the hell is this? Relative to funding labor, we know what that means, would be some union salaries, related to a ceremonial sign ceremony, so a ceremony regarding a ceremonial sign event, and it's gonna cost only thirteen hundred and forty-seven dollars. So is it about discretionary street furniture? Is it about labor? Is it technical clarifications? It's like the height of government gobbledygook. I have nothing against Mister McCosker, but look at this, you waited two hours, and it's something called a ceremonial sign ceremony, and you wonder why the city is in such a shambles.
General public comment.
First example of just, yeah, public comment on DanielGust@Substack.com, I have a story how the city council and the city agencies and Karen Bass's office haven't, and they're told the public and they're withholding information about a third, level-five dog attack that could have been prevented if you just ran a better animal services department. You're gonna pay twenty million dollars on three, maybe more, you're gonna pay twenty million dollars on three highly predictable, highly preventable dog bite cases, and by the way, the fire department hid information about it. And there was an armed response, six cars at the West Valley Pound with a guy with a machete. And your public information officer at the police department says, we don't show anything in that area, except you had six patrol cars and probably of the ten or more officers, but they're not willing to say at what address the nine-one-one call came from.
Caller, your time has expired. Next caller, please.
All right, starting off with item forty-six, that's related to the street vendors and how LAPD is going around and harassing the street vendors. You should let the street vendors do their stuff, sell their stuff. It's ridiculous that you keep targeting them when they're just trying to, trying to make a living, and it's just ridiculous. We have item forty-eight, which is related to the ceremonial sign ceremony in CD fifteen. What is the sign for exactly? Doesn't really say in the motion what the ceremonial sign is, so we don't know if it's appropriate to have this ceremonial sign or what here, because, I mean, it's just, I don't know. We have item fifty, that's related to lighting up City Hall for Holocaust Remembrance. You should note that the city council regularly allows and welcomes anti-Semitism in the chamber, including neo-Nazis, like when the cops went and violently arrested someone for standing up to someone holding a swastika sign in the chamber. So that should be noted. We have item forty-one, which is related to the Freedom to Marry ballot initiative. Now, it's good that you're supporting this, it's glad that maybe we're finally going to get this passed in the state and protect the rights for same-sex, same-sex marriage and what's that. Now, it's worth noting that there's, the city council actually supports some, at least doesn't do anything about homophobia in the council, in the city council, like, you know, Kevin DeLeong made some comments that were kind of homophobic on the fed tape. He's still sitting on the city council. So, yeah. Let's go to general comment.
Okay, you have one minute.
Paul, okay, let's just address Nissi and Ugo. Are you going to introduce that motion today to withdraw the ceasefire resolution from the Rules Committee since Paul's refusing to schedule it? You do have the power to do that, you know? You can introduce a motion that will withdraw it from committee, it will automatically be placed on next week's agendas, one of next week's agendas. You only don't have a lot of time, so you're just gonna let Paul just kill it in committee? You know, we want to find out where the city council stands on a ceasefire. We should have a full vote of the council. He introduced the motion to withdraw it from committee. I assume you didn't just introduce that motion for shits and giggles, I hope. I assume you actually want it for a vote, so introduce the motion to withdraw, you should have done that a long time ago. Paul, you have enough time to hear from all speakers, you.
Caller, your time has expired.
Harold Bigsby, I wanna speak on the sidewalk and public comment. The sidewalk vending is a big issue, and I don't want to put those people out of business, I want them to stay in business. But sidewalks are mainly for pedestrians, not for motor scooters, not for little bicycles or everything else that runs over pedestrians. So we need to have a minimum width of a sidewalk for vending. Those would be vending zones. We don't have to be Telegraph Avenue, South Campus, in the Lips or the Socialist Republic at Berkeley, but we do need, even if you have to take away a parking lane, boy, that's blasphemy, but take away a parking lane so we could have sidewalks vending. Now, public comment, we're in Pride Month, we're pride, and we're gonna have an exhibit on the twenty-ninth at Jan. Night City Hall in the Valley. And we ought to have old Ron Smith and have him set up a tent. Well, what would the tent be for? Well, there would be the place where the queers could go suck his dick and give him cigarettes. Now, queers, show your pride. You give that white trash goy a carton. Everybody else is getting pay raise, city workers, firefighters, police, you name it, airline people, restaurant people, but why doesn't the white trash goy get a pay raise? And you queer rabbi dudes, you give him two cartons, you can afford it, you faggot you rabbi.